Seeing that no one's coming forward to speak publicly on the, on the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Jones, is that all the action we have to take? All right, we're going to move on to the regular agenda item. We're going to move to item five, consider resolution establishing maximum rate of 0.483791 for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Bowles.
Mayor and Council, this item proposes a maximum tax rate of 0.483791 for $100 valuation for fiscal year 2023, 2024. The proposed rate is the same tax rate as approved in the 2022, 2023 budget year. The proposed rate is higher than the known revenue rate of 0.474371 and is lower than the total lower approval rate of 0.522978, which consists of a 2023 unused increment rate of 0.037217 and a current voter approval rate of 0.485761. The first vote on the proposed tax rate will occur on September 12th. The second and final voting on the proposed tax rate will occur on September 26th. This resolution just establishes the maximum rate.
Counsel, any discussion? Any questions? All right.
And, I'd have, this vote's going to take the super majority, right?
Yes, super majority basically saying is you need five members of the council to, to adopt or to reject. And so this is not just majority, it's super majority.
Right. So, Seth, I mean, the rate's the same, so only it's a little bit of an increase.
It's a little bit of an increase.
In our income, only because of the increased property values.
On the property values, yes, sir.
And, and the increase in numbers.
Then they're, you know, the new taxable.
Yeah, new taxable property.
Property. Any other further discussion? No action needed? Action needed? Okay, so, item five, consider resolution establishing maximum rate of 0.483791 for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Counsel, have a consideration for the adoption and asking for a, I mean, a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Matas, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item seven. Seth?
Uh, no.
Six. Item six. Consider necessary signatures in connection with city funds. This is a resolution. Mr. Bowles, go ahead.
The attached resolution provides a list of authorized signatures in connection with city funds. The list of authorized signatures is to be amended by adding the name John Beckmeyer and deleting Larry Fry. Upon approval, John Beckmeyer, city manager, and Agapito Bernal, deputy city manager, representatives from the city manager's office, and Seth Bowles, interim director of finance, will be authorized to execute, authenticate, certify, and endorse with a facsimile signature in lieu of their manual signature issuance of public securities, instruments of payment, or certificates of assessment for all city funds. This resolution also has myself, interim director of finance, and Christopher Hayes, senior accountant, will be able to authorize, execute, authenticate, and certify bank transactional data for all city funds. I can answer any questions on that short item there.
Counsel, any questions?
Move of approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve item six as presented. Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. I know you're under the gun, yes, you survived it, but it's still not time to relax.
I've still got two more, two more council meetings of all this to get out of here.
Well, let me tell you, you're seeing a glimmer of light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes, sir.
So, really appreciate all your work.
You're welcome.
You and your staff, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item seven, discuss and consider allowing OSA to play at the regular fall 2023 season at Sherwood Park. So, we want to introduce Ms. Susanna Pruka.
Pruka.
Okay. You go ahead, I have, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. and Mrs. Councilmembers, my name is Susie Pruka. I'm an attorney that has been representing the Odessa Soccer Association for the last about two weeks, and they're all in negotiation with the use of city fields for their soccer seasons. They have, my understanding is coming into this, that there's kind of two options. They can continue at Sherwood Fields and pay a lease in a use agreement with the city to continue to use those fields, or they can transition their use to both Floyd Gwin and Comanche East and Comanche West Parks. And me getting involved with them, they have decided they want to transition to Floyd Gwin and the Comanche East and Comanche West Parks, but they're not able to do that with the soccer season starting the weekend after Labor Day. So, I'm appearing before you all today requesting that they can play the fall 2023 rec season at Sherwood Park and then transition to Floyd Gwin and the Comanche Parks by the end of 2023, so December 31, 2023. This will allow them time to buy the portable goals necessary for use at those fields and as well as play in the transition. So, again, we're not impacting the product that Odessa Soccer gives, which is youth sports opportunities to thousands of families in Odessa, Texas.
So, we had pre-meeting and we spoke the final conditions. So, let me explain the city's position. So, in this pre-meeting before today, we put forward, and counsel, this is what we need to discuss. So, we're going to put forward that the proposal is to allow them to, the soccer association to continue as the footprint they have now for the fall season, which will begin on what date and what date will it end?
My understanding that the season starts the weekend after Labor Day, which I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Ten, somewhere around there.
That, yes. Their last.
September 9th, September, yeah, September 9th, yeah, somewhere around there.
Their season ends on October 28th, but they usually have two weekends in case there's rain, field issues, whatever, where they need to play makeup games. So, that would take you to November 11th.
November 11th, okay.
At the latest.
At the latest. That's for rec games at Sherwood.
And then after, after November, they'll transition to the other parks, which I think this council discussed that we will not charge them when they transition to those, under the condition of the following. There will be no permanent goals at the new parks, both at the Sherwood East, West, and the Floyd Gwin Soccer Complex. They will remain as multi-use Comanche. And so, East and West, and also the Floyd Gwin Soccerplex, which will continue to operate as a multi-use fields. There will be no permanent structures, no temporary structures, no mobile structures on the parking lot or any piece of the property, no permanent goals that will be embedded. So, these are going to be, the stipulations are going to be in the contract, because we will have to have a multi-use agreement for these facilities. We will require for all the equipment on the west side to be removed. If the soccer association wants to continue on the east portion, they will do so with the fee. But all property that is now in the Sherwood is now, it is the property of the city. Any athletics that would go on with soccer association at the park will be assessed, that fee will turn around to fix all the, all the things that need to be fixed that are wrong with the building, things of that nature. I think that the goal of the parks and recreation in the future is going to transition all recreational, basically leagues will be working towards a new complex within, within the next 24 to 36 months. But it's basically at their discretion. But we will go back to the, Matt, this is the only park, basically Sherwood, that is out of use as far as, so this will be a special exception for this season to continue, because it does go against our ordinance. So, how do we go about amending that, or do we need to amend it, or are we just allowing a special exception? Okay.
We're going to do, we're going to do that just on the 12th or 17th.
Okay. So, there'll be, so basically it'll be a further, the, then, the city attorney will wind up putting that language, putting it forth, we'll have the discussion.
And probably the language we're going to use is basically going to be just for, until November 11th, something like that, something very light, so that we're not involving all of us.
Okay, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since the building that was put at Sherwood, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Mayor, that it now belongs to the city.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is that going to eventually be moved out of the way because of the green space ordinance or whatever? I mean, the fact that, but what?
I, I think that's a decision for counsel, for y'all to decide later, at a later date. That is y'all's decision to make.
So, one of the things they need to do is they need to make an assessment and use our staff to go and make an assessment through engineering and the, and economic development and planning zoning to do an inspection and see what the actual condition of the foundation, things of that nature, and see if it's salvaged or if it's not salvaged, it needs to be dismantled and taken apart. But at that, we'll do it at a later time. We'll, we want to be able to get through the fall, let the OSA get through the fall season.
Sure.
And then, then we'll make that determination at a later time and go from there. So, you know, I think that we need to write it up, present it back in, and then we'll make that determination. But I think today, we want to reassure that the OSA will be able to go ahead and start their fall season, run through the dates of September 9th, 2022, at the latest, including they have to make up makeup games or things of that nature, at the latest, November 11th of 2023.
Right.
Okay.
So, is there any fee associated with it? Did I not see a fee?
No, we're not going to assess this fee and let them go ahead and run.
So, here's my question, that's ours. We know that they have tournaments come in, I know they charge for tournaments, and so they, they keep all that money for the tournaments, and they don't have to reimburse us for anything.
Yeah, that's true. They ha, well, they haven't.
They haven't.
According to, according to, if I'm correct, with the, the, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think from the former users' agreement, I think they were supposed to return a percentage.
They were supposed to do 10%.
10%.
And that was the deal that they had for, at UTPB for 20-plus years.
And that's never happened.
It's never been paid.
And counsel, this is something that right now is the time to discuss, if we want to implement that, or we don't want to implement that.
Yeah, because counsel, this is in your hands. This is what you want to do, which you all can come to a conclusion on.
Talking in January of 23, whenever they, thank you, Steve, whenever they move off of Sherwood and they go to Floyd Gwin and Comanche, are we going to be assessing the fees at that point? Or because they're, or because they're moving to those fields, we're not going to assess any fees?
Well, that, that's a question in the past that we said that we wouldn't charge if we go over, because they say they've never paid. But the thing is, is that in the agreement that's been in place for over 20 years, there's supposed to be a 10% that's supposed to come back, that we turn around and use for parks and recreation to help with the maintenance of the fields. I mean, we have to seed it, we have to maintenance it, we have to cut it, we have to water it, and so it's a nominal fee, but this is something that the council needs to discuss. If we're going to implement, then we have to implement, it's never been implemented. It's been in the books, but neither side is actually engaged in it. And so, the thing is, is the fees based on the registration, on the tournament play, or is it on concessions? You know, that's another thing.
Right now, in the agreement that we, the lease agreement that we have with OSA, of course, it's still just in draft form, we actually have 10% of the OSA's membership, yearly membership fees, and 10% of its yearly concession sales. And of course, it's up to y'all if we want to do that. Do we still want to charge the $2,500 per month for Sherwood? This is up to all of y'all to decide.
Let me ask a question about another sport, of course, baseball. For the city parks that we have, Little League baseball, do they pay a percentage from their concessions or anything to the city?
Max.
You should have the same lease agreement for everything, I would think.
Yeah, what I don't want us to do is, is to have something with one and not have with the other. I, I want everybody to be treated, created, well, treated fairly, even, even Stephen, so to speak.
That is reasonable, my question.
According to what, what I understand, everybody is supposed to have been paying that fee and nobody has ever done it.
Nothing in Little League, nothing for.
It states it, but nobody has paid, from what I understand.
Men's and women's, slow pitch.
Correct.
Football. It's all there, but it will be reassessed.
Nobody has, yes.
So, Max, real quick question, do those other sports, Little League, softball, whatever, do they have tournaments as well and charge fees, do you know?
They have tournaments, like, at the end of the year, because so, the city tournament jumps around, and so like, this year, they may have it, next year might go to Midland, after that, it might go to Big Spring. So, depending, they'll have a section of it.
It's just inter-league play, though, local, local reg.
No, that'll be to go to the, to the state championship. Yeah, and then ultimately to the World Series, Little League World Series. So, pretty much, they have the end of the season tournament, and that's pretty much it for baseball.
So, they don't have tournaments come in where they're charging a per-head fee like a thing?
No, that's a whole different, that's on the select side.
Soccer does, like, $100 or $85.
Soccer does, I believe they have at least two, maybe, that they have. They usually have something around October, like, something with the Turkey November.
Yeah, Turkey shootout. And I do, I do recall during the discussions, when, three years ago, when we were discussing this with UTPB and the soccer association, and just came up about paying the, the fees to UTPB to use their complex. And I do remember that at that point, OSA was okay with paying the fees, they just didn't want to give up their, their rosters to, to the, to UTPB for fear of competition of different leagues, which we're not asking for that, because we don't, the last thing the city wants to do is create soccer teams and not a league. But, um, so that's something that we've got to make sure that we're not, we're not asking for, we're not asking for the rosters and the names and the contacts and stuff, we're just.
We just want.
Number, number ahead, some fee and.
10%.
Yeah. But what I'm hearing is that fees have been in place over all these years for baseball, soccer, and whatever, and, but it was never enforced that those organizations that participated actually paid anything into.
Correct.
The fee budget.
That's what I understand.
Will that be something that you, Mr. Reyes, will be policing and in charge of responsibility to?
Yes, sir. So, what we're expecting to do is to start having more meetings with all the associations, and everybody across the board will be reminded of what's in the contracts, and hopefully, we're going to hold everybody accountable for it, because we do need that money to be put back into the park system, whether it's matching funds, whenever they ask for big expenditures, or just a daily operation that we do as staff as well.
Right.
So, yes, sir, we will be having meetings and we'll bring that.
Okay, thank you.
It seems like we should give that just an effective date.
I'm sorry?
Just an effective date.
Correct.
Effective date.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
Effective date.
Effective date, when it's.
When you're going to, when we're going to enforce this, we need an effective date.
Oh, well, I was assuming it was going to be September the 9th, when they go to.
You're going to do one and not?
No, all of them, yeah. I would think they all be done September, whatever. Yeah, that's fine, I don't care about that, but I just want to make sure, here's my whole deal, is that when they get through playing in Sept, when they get through playing in November, they, the fields are going to be in really good shape, even if we don't get some rain, they're in good shape, a lot of, they're all grass.
Correct.
So, by September, all the way to November, they're going to get really thin.
Correct.
And they're going to get bare, and they're going to have to be aerified, watered, fertilized, and all that stuff, and we need to be able to pay for that, and I think the way to do that is out of this 10% rather than a 2,500, because I can live with that, as long as we have some money to recover and take care of, you know, what you have to do to get them back into shape for the rest of the public.
And fortunately, unfortunately, the way, if, the way you want to look at it, right now, for the remainder of the year, we really only have soccer going, because baseball has just completed.
Right. They don't have fall season, do they?
They, they may here and there, a lot of them will start traveling for a little bit, they may have fall.
Okay.
I'm assuming they would, but it's not going to be as competitive, it's more like just to go through the system. But soccer will be playing a full-blown, uh, fall season.
But they have a figure, they have a bigger footprint there at Sherwood, and, and then the baseball's just contained to the, the fields that they have.
Correct. Yes, sir.
There's not as many people, all of them. I mean, you know, you're talking about having these on the soccer team each side.
So, basically, on item seven, on item seven, we discussed and considered the allowing of the plan, so we, we have to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and then what we're going to do on number eight is, you're basically going to tell me what you want in the contract, with, with the agreement, and so far, what I'm hearing is that you want, are you, are you saying you want to waive the $2,500 fee? What do you say?
Yeah, well, let's, let's go ahead and take an action on seven real quick. So, counsel, do we have any more discussion on considering allowing the OSA to play at the regular fall season for 2023 season? Any further discussion, comments? Okay, so, are we in agreement that we're going to allow the OSA to play, uh, starting September 9th, 2023, to the latest, November 11th, 23, 23?
If that's a motion, I'll so move.
Okay, either, we have a motion by Councilmember Vazquez, second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, now we're going to start about the specifics. So, we're approving the lease of soccer fields in the area located, so this is two items, soccer fields and building to be, uh, used at 4819 North Everglade, where it stands right now, which is a 40-foot building? Am I correct, Max?
Yes, sir.
I believe that's correct.
Forty, forty.
Forty by 85 or something. Yeah, that's big.
Twenty-six by 85.
Twenty-six by 85, yeah.
Obviously, my earlier question meant that I didn't read further down.
That's okay.
You got close. So, this is the use of the property, preparatory recreational activities fulfillment, so this is basically, are we wanting to waive the 2,500 fee for the fall season?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
We're going to waive the 2,500?
And so, we're talking about, you're going to waive the $2,500 per month, but we're still going to do the 10% yearly membership fees, which would be from September 9th to November the 11th, 2023.
And that is per, per head?
Per, yes, 10% per head, yeah.
Well, the count, but the overall.
Or the count, whatever, because we don't want to know the names of the kids, all we care about is if it's 200, 300, whatever they are.
Just round numbers. So, we're going to start this, this year, and we're not going to bill anybody else, so we're going to start this. No, this is across, this is across.
This is going to be for everybody.
Because everybody has it in their contract, we're just going to enforce it.
Actually, and, Susie, go ahead.
I would urge the council to maybe push off till January 1. Again, the soccer's got to move, and that costs, goals for those parks will cost in excess of $50,000, and Odessa Soccer is not a wealthy organization, and I understand that's in the use facility agreement, but again, I, I, we're trying to do the best that we can, and I understand that y'all need fees as well.
And Susie, I understand that, but they've been doing this for 25 years, and they're the ones that put everybody in this position 25 years ago, in the middle, and now. And so, the thing is, it's always, hey, we need another exception, we need another section, we need another exception. And I made this analogy, after we had that discussion last time here, a couple of weeks, three weeks ago, we, there were items that we didn't discuss by the, and I use this reference, we have a couple that is arguing, and they're engaged, at the end of the argument, the fiancee abandons the, his, the fiancee, hi, his girlfriend, by the time he gets to the end of the parking lot, he changes status on social media from engaged to, to single, and this is exactly what happened. We had a discussion, by the time that we walked out of here, we already were getting notifications that the season was going to go forward for the fall, and we were like, okay, we never had that discussion. So, at one point or another, we've had these rules in place for over 20 years, and yet nobody on either side enforced them. So, whether we do it today, or September 9th, or January 1st, we've had them in place. It's not like we're instituting a rule that's new, it's just, when, it's, when it's going to, it's been activated, but nobody's followed through, and, and, and it's, and it's everybody's fault. There's capability on the city side, and there's capability on the, on the, on the, on the.
Association.
The reg teams. And the thing is, nobody's going to come and give me a bill, I'm not going to offer it and pay it, and so, at one point, we just need to initiate it. And so, I think we're just trying to get into some uniformity and just go for, because here's the thing is, January 1, nobody's going to be playing, they're playing now, but we're going to have some costs associated after November 11th, just like Mr. Councilmember Thompson said, we're going to have to go back and put more money into it. All that equipment's going to have to be removed, and if they're going to take it, or we're going to take it, somebody's going to have to pay, whether it's going to be the association or the city. So, there's going to be costs associated with that equipment that's been permanently in there, that we necessarily didn't approve to be put in there, but because it is, and according to the, to the ordinance, I believe, it automatically becomes city property. We've had this discussion before, and it became very political a couple of years ago. And we had a, just a huge mess, and we had to call out PD to be able to put a stop to it, and then it all became a mess, and we're back in it, we're back in it again. I know there was a lot of things discussed, I think that we as a council viewed the movement from UTPB to, to Sherwood as a temporary, but haven't discussed it with other staff members today. Once again, there was some pushback on the staff, but it was the former director who says, you know what, you know, staff basically informed the former director that by having OSA move to Sherwood, when they did, they said, we started out Sherwood, we're going to return back to Sherwood. When staff pushed back to the director and says, hey, look, you're violating the ordinance on the open, open green space, I don't worry about it, we'll worry about it later. Well, it's now later and we're dealing with it. And so, I, I understand, there's some monetary, but the thing is, is that, you know, it's 10%, we need to put it back into, it's not going to pay for the whole thing, but the thing is, is that we need to start instituting. And so, I think that we're all understanding that we're going to go ahead and 10%, we're waiving the 2,500 per month, so, you know, that, that's a good little chunk of change, 10% on the overall kids, I don't know how big their fall season is, and we'll, we still have to find a formula to be able to do it, because the thing is, is that they got to give us the count, it's going to go to the finance, they have to assess the 10%, and we'll go from there.
Ms. Pruka.
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm Councilman Gilbert Vazquez. Are you considered a, an attorney retained by the Odessa Soccer Association, or are you just temporarily representing them in this cause?
I'm representing them in this cause.
Okay.
Yes.
What I was leading up to was, it is my understanding, I could be incorrect, that this organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if they actually have a board, if within that board, if they have a finance committee that reports its earnings, if you will, through the registration fees they charge. When you earlier said that the association was not a wealthy association monetarily speaking, I suppose, you know, I understand that it's all about kids, first of all, providing them an opportunity to, to play a sport that they love, and I'm, I'm a soccer person myself as far as following it, but, you know, I'm, I'm just questioning, over all these years that no fee was ever paid, and the buildup of all this monies that I understand nonprofits up to, sports nonprofits up to a certain level of gain of, of money, are supposed to report it to the IRS, if I'm not mistaken. I'm, I'm getting to the point of not really knowing if there in fact is some wealth there that, that is not necessarily being divulged. I hate to be accusatory, but that's, that's, something's not ringing well with me right there, I'll be honest with you. And if you want to bring it to their attention that I said this, I'm being recorded anyway, that's okay. I just didn't know if you were on top of that part of it, other than this that you presented tonight.
I, they are a 501(c)(3). From my experience outside of soccer, 501(c)(3)'s are required to file a 990, I assume they have done that, because they are still in operation, and so that should reveal to the public or to you all what their spending is on any given year.
Right.
I, I couldn't tell you the numbers, because I didn't prepare for that, for this meeting today, but if, if the council, if that's what you want to, to get that information, I'm happy to, to provide that to you.
Ms. Jones, will this be something that will be a budgetary, uh, that we as a city will be vigilant insofar as these fees and, fees and how they're administering their, their gain or whatever it is, their?
My understanding is that we will, from here on out, we will assess the 10% to all of the sports, sports associations, not only soccer, but also to. Not only soccer, but also to baseball, softball, uh, and that will, that that money will go back into, uh, the fields and the parks and everything. I I I don't know if you could say it would be guaranteed budget X amount every year, because those numbers may fluctuate.
Sure, sure, I understand that.
But whatever we can get will go back into our sports, our par- our parks.
Because, you know, we ask our other, uh, programs to justify their budgets when they come before us for for, um, money.
Right.
And I'm just somewhat equating that to now.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Reyes, uh, and his staff being more, uh, on top of, uh, collecting money and all that, you know?
And and that's what, and Max, he will be on top of it. It's, it's just something we don't, we can't say we're gonna get X amount every year, because it it's gonna fluctuate. We may get more one year, more, you know, less.
Sure, I understand that part.
Still have to implement a system that was never put in place.
Right. And this is just, as I see it, this is just a stopgap, just to get us, just to try to accommodate the association and the rest of the.
It is.
People, and and so to not create an undue burden, Councilman Vazquez, that that's why I think the ten percent's fair, it's only ten percent of whatever they actually do.
Sure.
And that'll give Max a little bit of money to go back and rework his fields, which he'll have to do, because those soccer fields are, you know, they're grass, and they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wear out.
They get beat up.
Especially in the fall, it gets dry.
Um, just point your information, I pulled up the Form nine ninety for the two thousand and nineteen year of Soccer Association, and it shows here their net assets or fund balances is currently at, uh, three hundred and ninety seven thousand, seven hundred and twelve.
How much is, would you repeat that for me?
Three nine seven, seven one two.
So approximately four hundred thousand dollars. But that's two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, that's two thousand and nineteen, that's the most, uh, current that I can find here.
And I think from, since then, they, that was when the move, so that the move to Sherwood, and I don't wanna get back into all that, that did cost them money. And so, you know, they, I I do, I can be confident to say they don't have four hundred thousand dollars.
And we and we got, we got that cost analysis, they they gave, they they provided that with us. And there's a lot of costs, but not all of it was associated with the move. So they had other costs, but they came out to about two seventeen, or something like that.
Yep.
And so, but the thing is, is that, you know, irregardless, they're still, they negotiated and agreed to a contract. Current, uh, and I, I can't say it's the current of board, but the thing is, is that that two percent has always been in there for all the associations. Uh, we can't speak to why it was never assessed, but the thing is, is that if it's in the contract, then we have that here too, you know, on both sides. And, uh, so we just want a fresh start, move forward, and be able to get, just recoup a small, have a little skin in the game that we can reinvest. So I think in all fairness, if soccer, their fees that are assessed at ten percent goes back to the facilities that they use. Baseball, that's ten percent, that goes back to their use. And and, you know, so soccer shouldn't be playing for baseball, baseball shouldn't be playing for soccer, and and that makes sense. Makes it a little bit harder, but the thing is, is that we here at the city have to be able to put together a type of system that we can oversee, that making sure that everybody's following the rules, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and keeping them accountable, and hold our departments and our, uh, staff accountable that this is being, that this is happening. It hasn't happened in the past, they haven't been oversight on both sides, and so, uh, this is how we've gone, you know, come to this situation today. So we're just trying to clean that all up. We've had rules in place, we just wanna implement them, must follow them, and police ourselves, if that makes sense. Little term for the criminal, uh, criminal attorney there. So any further discussion, is there anything else you wanna add?
No, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I guess what I wanna do is make sure, okay, if you're gonna make a motion to approve this, we wanna make sure that the twenty five hundred is no longer.
Yes.
And that you're gonna leave, are you gonna leave the ten percent yearly membership fees, ten percent yearly concessions? I guess whatever motion y'all make, lay it out for me.
Let me make this motion right here, I'll make the motion. So the city council will consider approving the lease soccer fields and the building at forty eight nineteen North Everglade, Odessa, Texas, and Odessa Soccer Association to use the city property for providing recreational activities to fill a public need that is, uh, soccer. So the city council will waive the twenty five hundred monthly.
Okay.
Fee for the use of the, uh, of the, uh, of the soccer fields and and the building at forty eight nineteen, uh, for the date of September ninth, two thousand and twenty three, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty three. But we'll assess a ten percent total, uh, membership for that season that encumbered September ninth, uh, through November eleventh of two thousand and twenty three, of the overall, uh, membership participation, and waive the ten percent on the concession.
Okay.
Counsel, any this?
And 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 Mayor, within that motion, are you still wanting the indemnity agreement?
Yes. Okay, with the indemnity agreement. Counsel, any other discussion?
I'd like to ask a question before the.
Yes, sir.
Uh, representing OSA, do you personally find that more palatable?
Wait a second.
You find it more palatable, uh, ten percent compared to the twenty five hundred dollars?
My personal opinion.
If you did the math.
No, I mean, I, yes, ten percent versus twenty five hundred dollars a month. I would think it is much more palatable. Yes.
We're going for the less, the least of the evils here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, that is just for the season, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, just for those.
And, um, just a a point of in, uh, clarification, I don't know if we wanna start the the date, uh, as August twenty ninth, because I don't, I think they go out there and line fields, and I don't, people practice out there, I don't wanna be in violation of.
I don't think we're gonna send out the, uh, the PD to enforce the September ninth. We understand that has to be prepped.
Yeah.
It's just basically is, is, you know, just for the point of contention, we'll just do it September ninth.
Okay.
Okay. So the thing is, it it it.
Second, no, forget the second.
Yeah, I know, but before we ask for a second, we do a final discussion, another point of view is that, I guess, there're gonna be a lot of registration before September ninth. Do you, you, you get what I'm saying? That there's gonna be a lot of registration, a lot of heads being registered before September ninth. That ten percent thing goes down.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion. Uh, how, but be sure we don't forget our robot, or they can buy the robot.
Yeah.
We own a robot.
We do have a twenty thousand.
How much is it, Max, a twenty thousand dollar robot?
We paid ten or half.
Okay, so.
We paid half of it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We did.
So that, we just gotta figure that out, so. That's an, that's a conversation for another.
That's an, that's a conversation for another time.
Just don't wanna forget that, it's a piece of equipment that's pretty expensive.
It's it's in the back of my mind, and so, uh, we we will do that. We will do that, because we have to sign a multi-use agreement, and at that time, we will discuss that item.
Right, yeah.
So make sure that, you know, nobody forgets. Counsel, any further discussion before I ask a second? Any other comments, Mr. Jones?
No, I think, uh, Councilman Thompson said he'd second.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any further discussions, Ms. Prok, anything else you wanna?
No, you're.
Okay, so we have a motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Thompson, any further discussion? All in favor indicating the same night?
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same name, right, potion, a potion, a potion, motion passed unanimously. We need to potion.
And and Mayor, I do wanna thank Suzie, because without her, I I I don't think the OSA realizes what a good deal they just got. Maybe they will have enough sense to realize what you've just done for them. So thank you.
Thank you for meeting us.
It's about the kids playing soccer.
That's, that's exactly, that's where we're trying to get to.
But, yeah, that's what we wanted.
Can't, can't the adults just get along?
The council's motivation is for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray, but I appreciate you.
Yes.
And be, safe travels back to middle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item nine, discussing considering municipal board and appointments. Who wants to take this on? It says council.
I didn't put this on.
I didn't put it on.
I would be happy to get some background on it, since I got this started.
Oh, do you?
My call.
Once, once upon, oh.
Nay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Once upon a time, on a board DOI, we were looking at improvements for downtown Odessa, and Odessa in general, but downtown Odessa. And the the idea came up with a lot of pictures was signage, bad signage in downtown Odessa. And how, physically, how can we deal with that? Three plans. One, I call it taking the candy box down to the business owner, friendly, social, um, encouragement to put bulbs in the light, or updating their signage, what could we do to help? Do you need a ladder? Just a friendly approach, approach would be step one. Step two, would would finding a business owner that goes, I know, I know, I would love to improve that sign. Uh, I I know, I see it every day, and it just irritates me. Yeah. Grants that can be set up, because the DOI can establish those grants. What would be the third category that we could possibly run into? And that would be ordinance, and that would be enforcement. So going down the rabbit hole, finding, uh, the actual ordinance, it actually comes up in the zoning ordinance that the city of Odessa shall appoint a municipal board on sign control, so that that problem that can go to that board, and they say, yes, no, whatever it is. But, uh, since the board has never been established, um, we can't follow the path to correct any issues. And that's where this comes from.
And you are correct, Councilman.
But I will say.
Never been established.
That, um, I've spoken with Mr. Jones, and and actually, I said, golly, can 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 we rewrite that a little bit so that it goes to another board that's already established and running, and take that on? And that's what I got.
No.
No. So it's it's something that.
Cause this is.
We're mandated by ordinance, actually, to have and to be assigned by the city of Odessa.
Well, here's a question for you, Councilman.
Change the ordinance, right?
I I don't disagree with the ordinance, but it wouldn't be said to be just to downtown.
No, this would, this would be, yeah. Downtown Odessa could utilize that as a tool, but it would be.
I understand, yeah. It's more important to know that, because, you know, a lot of towns, a lot of cities like, you know, desert cities like us, like Phoenix and Scottsdale, you know, they they limit the height of their signs, they can't have one twenty foot there. They have the little short ones, and, you know, all that kinda stuff. So I think there's a lot of merit to it, I guess is what I'm trying to say, which probably something.
Well, the city's, the city is growing, and I'm not looking at it today, I'm looking at five, ten, twenty, twenty, thirty years down the road.
Hey, so not trying to complicate this, but if this board's gonna be set up to enforce ordinances, shouldn't there be a board to enforce all the ordinances that we have?
Well, there usually is on on.
Are we just getting into something deeper?
No, there there usually is on other, other ordinances, they are, there are the boards that look into the other laws that we have. This particular board is a municipal board, and what it will do is literally go around and act as a sign control. And of course, it's required by chapter two sixteen of the local government code for the state of Texas. But we in Odessa have never set one up. Now, this board, oddly enough, you can't just pick people out of the blue to put a sit on it, okay? So it's composed of a five-member board. There are two real estate appraisers registered with the Society of Real Estate Appraisers, or the American Institute of Real Estate Appraisers. So you gotta have two real estate appraisers that are in one of those groups. One person engaged in the sign business in the municipality, okay? That's the third person. Fourth person has to be one employee of the State Department of Highways and Public Transportation, who is familiar with real estate valuations and eminent domain proceedings. That's number four. Number five.
The mayor.
No. The plot thickens, the plot thickens. Number five is one architect, a landscape architect licensed by the state, the state of Texas. And each one of these guys are appointed for two-year terms. So those are the five folks, and I suspect all of you came here tonight with no- nobody in mind that was, that was in the real estate appraiser group, because I don't know nobody in the real estate appraiser group. Um, so we may want to table it and bring it back out for y'all to actually appoint somebody. And this is something that y'all are gonna have to appoint as a council. Y'all aren't gonna get, because Norm and I sat down the other day, and we went through it, and this isn't something y'all are just gonna be able to say, okay, well, this is my guy, that's your guy, no, this is as a council.
Yeah. Well, the, here's the thing is, you gotta find the qualified people.
First and foremost.
You got, and then you have to get them to apply, then we gotta get them a degree, then here's the hard part.
It's complicated.
Get them to show up.
Yeah, that's right. One more problem.
Yeah.
So who's gonna, who's gonna enforce it?
Yeah.
Cause we, we can't, you code enforcement to do what they're supposed to do already anyway. So you gotta enforce it if you're gonna do all that.
Yeah.
So who does that?
That's Mr. Lawyer.
Well, that comes back to, that's gonna come back to probably code enforcement, probably gonna be streets, most likely. Um, public works, there's gonna be some hoops to jump there.
Well, you also gotta realize, whatever exists now is grandfathered in, you know, because it, this, you know, the thing is, the question.
When does this take place, or do we know when this?
Oh, this took place years ago.
Because if you notice.
Years ago.
We have a seven-member board, so that, when when you notice five, yeah, five districts.
This was probably written twenty or thirty, forty years ago.
Councilman Haney has risen his hand for a question.
Standby. We have a big old sign that's sitting up there in that shopping center up there that's over the height limit, so are we gonna tear that?
Nope.
That down?
It's all grandfathered in.
Nope. This is anything for going, going further, and. So we have city enforcement already going on, and anybody that's building anything new, that's their part to do. That's our inspection department to do.
Right.
They approve all of this, so therefore, I don't, I see this as a waste of time to do this, because anybody new coming in has to meet this standard with them, because they're getting inspected in the city limits. I don't care what they're doing in the county, but the city limits, you've already got an inspection department together that's supposed to be enforcing all of this. If they're not doing their job, then we need to go ask them why they're not doing their job. I mean, i- if you read this, I mean, it it has all types of.
Signs.
Different, uh, sizes. Here in the highway, it's fifty feet in height, and should comply with city of Odessa building codes. Now, this is Interstate twenty business, east intersection, eighth second, State Highway one ninety one, east intersection, east loop three thirty, loop three thirty, west US Highway three eighty five, interstate Highway twenty, US Highway three eighty five, north of Yukon, south of I twenty. That's outside pretty much the city limit. And so, uh, then you go back into, God, I mean, it just, I read this, I had to read it several times, it kept putting me to sleep. And, um, freestanding business, commercial sign construction, exceed maximum height of permitted thirty feet, feet above a grade level, except for the following highway, or any uses with grade level, two hundred feet separation, three times linear building footage office, which we get, sign applies. Yeah.
Well, and and I get Councilman Haney's point, because, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Cornell, this was brought up because we see, you're seeing signs that are old and outdated and just not.
Yeah, they're, they're.
So if we grandfather all those signs in, this is pointless.
Well, so basically, I I took this and I gave it over to Elizabeth, I said, let's discuss this. So we started talking about it, and I think that's, and Mark makes a good point. Because all these signs exist, we put in the board, they're going in there like that, everything that exists cannot be touched.
It stays.
So there's one in particular, so there's a sign.
There would be safety issues, though, if it was hazardous.
Yes, but the thing is, is that, like, for example, there's one particular sign that I know that's been brought up to downtown, that's been, uh, a point of contention. And so there's some, uh, because this also has to go with other ordinances. You know, we have so many conflicts, and that's the problem. You know, i- if, we do have to have a sign ordinance, and I asked for the sign ordinance a while back, are you okay? Are you hurting? Your medication?
I'm good, it's Mark's band.
Yeah, their medication is.
I know, I know, she was hurting, hurting.
We might better hurry up.
So basically, let's, let's do this, can we just table this item for today, bring it back, we got a lot of questions on this. And then, and 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 ask more questions.
Uh, and Mayor, I really want Elizabeth Shaughnessy here, to, I know she's gone to Dallas for the storm work, but I really think she should be here.
Well, I I did have a discussion with this, and let me tell you, she punched a lot of holes to it.
Yeah.
A lot.
Okay.
And and I, and I agree with Councilman Haney, and I I think this is just another layer.
Yeah, I did know what to do with it, that's what I ran into, and I just bring it here to look at it. Elizabeth, did you, did you wanna say anything, or we covered about everything?
She's not here.
No. Sorry. You, you wanna get into this, Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Hi, good afternoon. Um.
Start your name for the council, please.
Elizabeth Prieto, downtown Odessa. Um, I do understand that ordinance would be citywide, um, if we. Um, if we look at just downtown Odessa, I do see the benefit of having, I understand the grandfathered, um, signs are in, but bringing them up to code like we are trying to bring up the facade and we're trying to bring the buildings inside up to code would be beneficial for downtown and I'm sure in other areas of, of the city as well. So I understand there's a lot of hoops and a lot of, um, ideas and man, that list of five members, that's a lot. Um, however, I do see where if at a later date it would be brought back, that it would be a really good discussion to have, I think, citywide. And not just downtown, uh, great for downtown.
You know, one of the other things that I have a concern is, you know, what, uh, what due hardship will be caused by having other businesses do, do the, the, the upgrade? I know one particular business downtown, they did all the, uh, the remodeling, they did the facade outside, but didn't touch
But they left the sign, yes.
The sign, I know the neighbors having an issue with it. This came up as, well, you know, you can't, I understand this exists, but you can't massage an ordinance for one particular area.
No, I understand.
Yeah. And, and it is layer bureaucracy.
Um, it is.
The sign ordinance has come up several times throughout many, many years and it evolves and it changes and, ah, and it's just, it is just very bureaucratic. And, uh, and so I, I, I would be, I mean, I, I would rather not have it, but, you know, honestly, the thing is, is I, I, I just think, counsel, I think we need to table it and have a further discussion.
Yeah, I, that's, that's what I would
Yeah, cause we also haven't discussed too, one of the options that was given was, you know, to offer a grant to help. Where's that grant money gonna come from? So, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of questions still to address.
DOI, DOI processes the grants.
That's the one.
But it is citywide.
Yeah, for
We process the grants, but it goes through ODC, so yes, the grants do go through ODC, so that would be adding another layer as well.
Yeah.
So.
But it'd be citywide though, so yeah, it won't, it wouldn't be
It wouldn't just be downtown.
Downtown, yeah.
I don't blame you. I'd be able to sleep myself.
I'd like to see staffers come back, if we can bring it back to the table, like Stafford, tell me how we're gonna enforce it. Cause we're having a big problem with code enforcement anyway, so.
Absolutely.
Now, now we're taking on one more deal, which is fine. I think we need that, it's gonna make our city better, but we gotta make sure we know how we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
And the only thing I was concerned about was simply, since it was a state ordinance and we were asked to do that, are we okay not having it, you know?
Well, I, you know, I think we, I think we need, we have it in the ordinance and I think eventually we're gonna have to put the board together. Either that or we're gonna have to look at the law and see if we can actually throw it out. But what I've read so far, I don't think we can.
Is the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's kinda
I'm finding those people.
Can we upgrade the ordinance?
We can, we can look at that. We can look at that.
So you can upgrade the ordinance, take out what you don't want and what you do want.
Yeah.
That's the easiest thing, so you could take out all of those people.
Well, we, we just need to, we just need to, need to look at it when the time comes.
I'm looking at it right now.
I know, it's, 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 you know.
I wanna redline it right now.